We're back at 7:30. We're not going to take any action now that we reconvene the issue about the property taxes. All right, next up, we have a public hearing scheduled on the proposed fiscal 1819 budget to provide an opportunity for citizens to comment. They adopt the budget, we'll allow amendment after one reading, although we're not going to adopt it tonight, it's a discussion. So, an open public hearing. Does anybody have any comments, questions?
We should close the public hearing.
We should close the public hearing. All over the second.
Second.
Lots of seconds, all right. All is in favor? All right, thank you. All right, so that is the public hearing. All right, next up, we have a public hearing scheduled on the proposed combined property tax rate of 30 cents to provide an opportunity for citizens to comment. All right, so we have a public hearing. We don't quite have a public hearing on the tax rate, but I always like to have them when we do the budget, because obviously the tax rate is in the budget, and we've got to figure out the profit taxes. So, again, this is an opportunity for citizens, anybody who want to have anything to say about the tax rate. The budget has the tax rate being the same as it was in the past. There's no change in tax rate.
We should close the public hearing.
All right, we close the public hearing. I have a motion, I have a second.
Thanks.
A second from Darryl, all okay, all is in favor? All right, thank you, all right, public hearing is done. All right, next up, we have business citizens forum, this time any person business for the council, without schedule, only identities can be counted in more form or actual table on these items.
Mayor and Council, I'm here to represent the MDD board. We are going to have our city picnic on October 14th. Linda was able to get a new band, we have a band, so.
I'm Brenda Depp.
Oh, Brenda Depp's on it. Okay, thank you, Brenda Depp. So, we're going to have a new band, I want to try to get the fire trucks like it did last year, house house, and try to have a great city picnic again.
Less meat?
Less meat. Less meat. Less meat.
Mine lasted for a year.
I still have some.
Did you?
So, we just, I just wanted to let everybody know, and we're excited to sponsor again.
You can have me here or the microphone?
Over here.
Okay.
Let's also make sure we go through it again, I mean, that was a lot of work, I heard last year, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You said October 14th, correct?
Yes.
That's Sunday?
Is it a Sunday?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't come up with the times or anything yet, so.
No, I just, Sundays, I was thinking Saturday, I was curious.
All right. Any else, Linda?
No. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. All right, next up, on the regular agenda, we're going to take these a little bit out of order, because we had to, we forgot Ed's thing, so. First up is, I want to deal with the streetlights, and then, assuming that's the real four, we have to amend the budget to handle that, so there's a couple of things. So, let's do, we're going to do six, and then we're going to do seven. So, let's not deal with them. Okay, so we're going to do six, and first up now is going to be consideration of streetlight upgrades by Mr. Lee.
Okay, thanks, Mark. If you were, if you remember it, Ed, or if you were here last month, I gave a pretty short overview of where we were at in terms of replacing the village streetlights. So, what I've done, if.
I'm looking, just.
Okay, no problem. Is kind of consolidated that to a one page, kind of an update to just re-familiarize everybody with the information that I'd shared earlier. So, the current infrastructure is aged and inefficient, it provides a habitat for insects because of the shape of the cover for the bulb, it's high glare, lacks uniform light distribution, there's no color or type or wattage consistency. We're being charged multiple kilowatt hour rates based on the wattage of the bulb, and it's not IDA compliant. So, the proposed new structure, which is the installation of the Liotech Green Cobra LED lights, which we've had installed along, shortly, for several months now, hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at it, if you were interested, would be installed. They're high-powered white LEDs, free from mercury and lead, they eliminate the habitat for insects, there is color and type and wattage consistency as a result, they're low glare, they offer an estimated 100,000-hour life expectancy, which is somewhere over 20 years. Co-Cur will begin charging us the lowest kilowatt rate hour, so there is some savings there, and certainly they are IDA compliant. So, the project timeline, Co-Cur is committed to starting the project within 30 days of receipt of the contract and payment, and they would have it completed in less than 30 days from the start. Capital cost involved is $51,418. Questions?
Well, I'm just pointing out, just remember that part of this whole project, we ended up, after all the means to Co-Cur, re-rating our sewer plant, and when we did that rerating, which is to save more than this, just from that kind of collateral issue that came up, right? I forget what it was, what the savings were.
It was like eight or nine.
It's about, I thought it was like $500 a month.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Which is, you know, something nice. You know, I like it, I mean, obviously, I think it's great, I like dark sky stuff. I think trying to get, trying to get some consistency in the town is good, it looks like it was actually planned, you know, we're kind of retrofitting some stuff to make it look like we have a plan in place, rather than, you know, six different kinds of lights, and, you know, it just looks like a hodgepodge, you know, so.
I think when Ed started on this, I don't think we really knew where this was going to go, and I don't think anybody anticipated for $5100 we could clean up the aesthetics.
I thought it was going to be about $50,000.
Yeah, I thought we would get a plan for future development.
I thought we were going to phase it in over like five years.
So, personally, I think, I think this is one we jump on, but I don't think the offer's going to get better.
Darryl, you live on this side of town?
Yeah, I went down a month or so ago and looked at the difference between the lights, and it's incredible. I mean, they really, really are a lot better, and we like what we have down here, being a light crisp, people describe it as humping or something, and all that stuff, so it looks a lot better. And the consistency would be good, too. Much more functional as well, for people, I mean, there is a reason for a street light, you know, people drive by, and you see people walking and all that, and you can see it much better than what we're going to have.
All right, so, so in order to operationalize this, what we're going to do is, we now have to do a budget amendment to put it in the budget, and then that authorizes the project to go forward. You don't have to, if you vote on a budget amendment, that authorizes this, we don't authorize the, you understand, it's all, it's all one saying. So, do you have any more questions for Ed? Okay, then, Clint, could you pull up the, so the next, okay, so the next item that I want to talk about is, in order to do this project, we have to rearrange a little bit of money.
Which one does this one want?
Budget amendment, new, one of the, new budget amendment, I think that's it. Okay, so I've actually printed it, so it's easy to, to look. So, the idea is that we have, there's two events that have happened that are going to require a budget amendment, and, so, here's the issue, if you, if you look at the, at the general fund, if you look at the second page there, Clint, can you go down to the general fund expenses spreadsheet? Okay, just, there you go. So, no, go to bottom, I'm sorry, there you go, all right. So, down here in CapEx, so we had budgeted $5,000 of CapEx for drainage improvements, and zero for the city. That was the original budget. Well, now, it's, here's what's transpired since then. Ed's project is five, and the doors, remember, we're replacing the doors here, so that's a capital expenditure, so we replaced the two doors, and the panels, and redude all everything here, is six. Okay, so, it's 11,000 total is the CapEx for the city. It's just not going to be drainage improvements, it's going to be 11. So, that's, that's the change in that line, is the 11 there. Couple of other changes, as long as we're doing a budget amendment, there are a couple of numbers which we now know the answer to, which we didn't know. So, when we do the fire EMS, it's so much a run, but it's based on last year's numbers. We know exactly what that number is, it's 27,100, that's exactly the number, so it's not going to change. So, might as well just put in that exact number, because that number is exactly what it will be. We're here anyway. So, if you scroll up a little bit more, so our attorney fees were like 67 now, again, with some of this stuff, that's not the actual number, it is, but it isn't, because for instance, if you guys remember when we did the, I don't know if you were here, we did the inter-local agreement with the three cities, remember that one? Andy had to do all that, our attorney drew it up and did all that stuff, the developer paid us, we just told him, this is the bill, and he gave us the money. So, we didn't pay, we did pay, but he paid us, so it's.
Reimburseable.
Right, exactly, it's totally reimbursed, it's a pass through. So, that's kind of why that number, it's real, but it's, so what I did is, it was 60, I just made it 65, because that's pretty close to where we're actually going to be if you take away the reimbursements. So, that's kind of what I did there. We're almost to the end of the year, you know, this is through nine months out of 12. The other change there was, the election number we now know isn't given, it's done, it's right here in this folder. So, elections used to be 3,000 for us, but now we're in a precinct, it goes up, because now we're officially a county precinct, and the machines, and the programming, and, so our elections now are going to cost about $4,500, this is the new standard for elections. So, again, we know that number, it's fixed, it's not going to change, we already have the bill, it's a fixed number. So, I changed that number there. The revenues don't have to change, everything is pretty much, I project the revenues are everything in right amount that we're supposed to be. Good question.
Yes, come in and help us understand what the assumptions were that resulted in the increase in attorney fees budget, when it's a precinct.
From 60 to 65?
No, actual, actual from last year. It's 36.
For this year? We had a settlement, $40,000 settlement, final settlement.
It's the last one.
We split it in two years.
That's true, I thought it.
Now, the way.
I thought last year was the last one.
The last one for the budget.
It gets tricky. Last year, you are recruited. So, it hit our finances last year, but we didn't actually write the check until this year, so there's a little bit of this, a little bit of timing issue. So, here, so our normal status quo is about 30, that's what we normally are at in normal kind of regular operations, but it's about 20 to 30. The reimbursable stuff is kind of what has thrown a ring. We now actually have a new line, I've talked to the counties, and they now agree we changed, and they're putting it out, we actually have a new cat, a new line, it says reimbursed expenses. It used to call it miscellaneous income, and I don't like, that's not right. It's not income, exactly, but I don't want to go into the calculus.
So, this 11,000, we just moved it from the drainage up to the capital, that's what we did?
Yeah. Because, again, this is when you get into the roll-up, right? So, the budget's on the first page, so, if we, let's say, let's say we just had Ed's project, we could have spent the 5,000 on CapEx lights instead of drainage.
Okay, I don't think that was quite right.
Both CapEx.
We chased the line on water load and then added Ed's project.
Oh, okay, so we only had like six originally?
Five.
So, where did the six go? How did you get to 11?
Okay, 11 is because the doors, we're getting branded doors for City Hall, the two doors, and we're getting new panels, new everything on the front doors.
There's some added for Ed's, and then there's some added for the doors.
So, we thought the doors would come in around five, because we're not doing any drainage improvements.
Oh, we're not?
No.
So, are we, are we like doing that next year, considering we have, wasn't that important?
We've done, the only, we've done all the drainage improvements we can do right now, we have to wait for Emmanuel, you know, on the curve?
Yeah.
We've got to wait till the finish of the house, and does final grade, to see if we have to redo the ditch there or not. So, we're waiting on him. There really isn't, there's no other drainage improvements, that's the only like problem area that I see right now, over here, that has drainage.
I thought there was a couple of, when we first talked about drainage.
There's, there's one driveway where water backs up, where the sheriff lives.
Yep, that's water, remember?
You know, but there's issues there, I'm talking with him, we've got to figure out what to do there, because I don't.
We're going to do a little like.
It requires an engineering solution, because of, the corner isn't on the corner, the inlet's from the back, it's, if you were to look at it, you know, the water normally goes and hits the corner, and then it goes out the street. Well, the inlet is about 20 feet back from the corner, and then it goes out the street. So, you've got to engineer, because all I just zip right by here, it's like, how's the water make a left turn?
That would get a little better, because we can fix this driveway, but then you move it down again, so we can kind of back.
That's going to overflow the street.
Let the whole thing out.
So, is it something that we need to add to next year's fiscal budget, or?
We certainly can, yeah, yes. Okay? So, so, so what I wanted to do is, I wanted to make a couple, since we're amending the budget, I just wanted to amend a couple of them, but again, there's no need to go through the whole laundry list, because they're all going to sum up, and they're all going to roll up into the numbers. These are the only two that were, since we know the number anyway, might as well just put in the actual one.
No, thanks, let's go. Any other questions?
On the election expense, it did go up, but I don't want you to think that we drove it up because of the cruising change. They made a significant investment in new election equipment, all new election equipment. So, that price was going to go up.
It was advertised, everybody's.
Everybody, it was going to go up, whether we were on cruising or not, so that was something that we drove.
That makes sense, yeah, that weird scanner dropped.
15 computers they brought in.
Okay, so, this is the, so, anyway, that's the amended budget, nothing changed in the utility fund, it's fine.
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion. Clint, are you going to make the motion?
Yeah, my motion approved the 2018 budget for this.
All right, I have a motion to approve the budget amendment, do I have a second? So, you're going to second it, all is in favor? Thank you. So, we're going to, so, go ahead. Go ahead.
Go where?
Go.
Go where?
Go on your project.
Oh.
Call Co-Cur, go! It's authorized now, okay. All right, now, let's get back to, done the last two, let's go up to the first one. All right. Number one, discussion of servicing a town hall playground, that is Serena. You're up.
So, I just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the playground servicing. Right now, we have the mulch. So, with mulch, it, he proposes, so every year you need to add new mulch, so right now we need to figure out what to do with the servicing, because either, because the safety, we're not meeting regulations now, so either we have to add new mulch, or we have to figure out a new servicing. With the research I've done, I think the best option is to do the rubber mulch, which is a step up from the wooden mulch out there, and it's a lot cheaper than doing corded rubber or doing turf, which is a lot of upkeep, they're significantly more expensive. So, right now, it's about 4,600 square foot of the playground, and what I would like to, actually, I'm going to show you guys some samples, so you guys know what it's like.
This may be a first, I don't know, I've never seen samples. This is cool!
Because I got a lot of bids, because I wanted to make sure, you know, we were getting a good price, so a lot of companies send samples. Here you guys go, here you go. And they are different colors, that can be determined later on. So, the nice thing about this is, there doesn't decompose, there's no insects, it helps prevent weeds, with the wooden mulch, you have to keep adding mulch, 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 with this, you shouldn't have to do that. The maintenance is essentially maintenance-free, you just blow it with a blower, unlike turf where it takes a lot of work. Corded rubber is nice, except you're looking at 50,000, 60,000 dollars for that, where this is significantly cheaper. It doesn't get hot, even the black, I know the black is a little bit of a turnoff, but there's a zillion colors. It doesn't get hot, it's not toxic to children, if they put in their mouths, it's less slippery, you know, kids fall on the playground, it doesn't stick to them like the mulch up there. So, Liz and I, you know, we talked about this, and her and I both thought that this would be a good option, because the other, there is just too expensive, and this is just a really good solution. So, I went around and got a bunch of quotes from different places, and there is a wide range of quotes, but you have about two or three that is less than $10,000. One, they still haven't gotten back to me, but they said they would price match any of my quotes, that was Rubber Floor.
Is that what this is?
Uh, yes, one of them is from Rubber Floor.
Yeah, I went to.
Yeah, and the other one is from, I can't remember, but they're so similar. The only other sample I have is Jelly Bean, and that is very different, it is shredded rubber from like the workout facility. Can I pull it out? So, that is very different, but that is 16, 17,000 dollars, so that is a big difference. Oh, here it is. And actually, I don't think you guys like the look of this as much. It's very different, just so you know. But I thought you guys should see it in general.
Can we have this in like a multi-color instead of just one color?
Well, that is what Jelly Bean is, I mean, maybe, I guess you could, but I, well, color, I guess.
You can vary the one.
Yeah, you could vary the one, but one color might look even more uniform, but it's kind of up to you guys, I guess. So, Sam actually is willing to do all the labor for free. He is willing to take the mulch now, remove it, to spray the weed killer, lay down the geotextile fabric, and then put the new rubber down. So, the only cost for us would be the rubber, then extra of the black paneling, because right now, we, when I added to the playground last year, we took some of the paneling and moved it over so we could extend it. So, Mayor Vargas and I talked about just closing it off, you know, it's not that much cost, I think there were $40 for four feet of it, so finishing, we might as well just close it off. Eventually, Liz and I talked about expanding the whole playground, but this is right now, just step by step. So, closing that off, and we would have to pay for the fabric, which isn't too bad, but Sam is willing to do it all. Also, I went to the MDD meeting last week, the president might have given me a little bit of a hard time, but the MDD board is willing to give us $2,500 towards this project. And I know we have $10,000 in the budget, so overall, I think we can do this project for less than, you know, 25, 12,000, $12,000. So, I was hoping, I want to hear your guys' thoughts on that.
Got a question. Doesn't seem to be much flexibility here, is this, this is pretty hard.
It's hard, but it's also, it's not going to go, it's not going to absorb into the ground like the wooden mulch, just kind of, this doesn't get like that, so you don't have to keep replacing it over time. Are you talking about hard for the kids to fall on?
Yeah, or, yeah, or walking, I mean.
Well, you know, one thing, Ed, when you get, it's going to be four inches of this, right?
Yes.
I think the question may come from the spaces in between.
Is it the size?
Very, variable, like some of them are.
They may be a little bit bigger than this, because this is a sample.
Super small, yeah, and I called them, and they said it definitely varies in size. This one's bigger, I think Mayor Vargas has the little bit bigger bag.
I'm just curious whether it's the $6,000, $7,000 difference between these bids, what is there, is the material that different, or is?
Well, Jelly Bean, I think because it is a different material. They like, they want to say they're higher up, because some people complain that this is from tires on roads, so that is why. The other ones, I think it's because they're companies like Home People, Lowe's Club, Sam's Club, they're just these big companies that, they just charge $700 for a bag.
So, they're the ones that are.
Yeah, ones that are lower priced are ones that are purposeful for playground.
Directly from the.
Yeah, like a flooring company, essentially.
It's just incredible, how they make the difference.
A lot of the stuff, if you just say the word playground in front of anything, the price doubles.
Oh, really?
I guess they, you know, Consumer Product Safety Commission, you know, I mean, you've got to make sure that you eat it, you know, I don't know.
There are a lot of rules.
Or they're trying, governments will just stand whatever.
Go buy a garbage can, and look at a $1,000 garbage can, it's crazy.
So, the previous year, fiscal year, there was still $10,000 left from that fiscal year.
We have, so, here's the nice thing about this, if, if we agree to go forward, so the 10,000 is in this year's budget, so we can spend that, you don't even need to vote on it, we can just, it's in the budget, okay? So, that 10,000 doesn't need any approval, it's already been approved. So, the 2,500 for the MDD, to me, covers, you know, the, the extra panels, kind of ancillary stuff, you know, there might be a few things here and there. Sam's going to take the mulch and put it on the top of the burn, the crappy mulch, we're going to stick it down the sewer plant.
Give it to the other Sam.
So, yeah, we'll use it on the trail down there or something, but, so, basically, it's already in the budget, now, now that Serena's coming under the number, so, I don't know, it's more of a comfort to move forward or not.
No, I'm talking about the 2017, we, there was $10,000 left over in the 12 that was budgeted.
It doesn't roll.
It doesn't roll.
It doesn't roll.
No, if you don't spend, you didn't spend it.
And so, I thought, I was like, I don't think so!
You know, and, and coming up shortly, is going to be next year's budget, right now there's a goose egg in there.
Coming out here, we're looking at 15,000, so 10 in the budget, 2,500 for MDD.
No, I think she's going to do the 9,597.
All right, okay.
The natural, is that the one you're going with?
Or rubber recycle, or Rubber Floor, they said they would match.
Okay, so we're looking at 9,000, okay.
I think we're looking at 10.
Six grand just for that, huh?
They said they would match, however, if they don't, we still have two quotes that are over 10,000.
My only other comment is, don't turn in the committee, pick color, pick a color.
Oh, yeah, he said that, too, I, yeah.
I agree, so, what we agreed to do is to delegate this then, and no tears, no Monday morning quarterbacking after this is over, unless you want to get out there with a shovel, shovel it up, just step yourself.
Do it.
All right, Eric, I appreciate the MDD helping out.
We should really thank Linda, Eric was late to the meeting.
Oh, he didn't, boy, you had to.
He walked in last minute!
Because the last, last month, you took your shirt off, did you keep your shirt on? Oh, it was for the diffibler.
Test dummy, yes.
Any other questions?
I just have one, and this is just pure lack of knowledge. From a usage standpoint, I mean, obviously, you must feel that there is value in doing this for young children that use it. Do many use it?
I think, I think a lot of kids use it, but say, no kids use it, I think aesthetically, it's something needs to happen, because I think it looks terrible for our town. So, so even if people weren't using it, which I think there are a lot of people using it, I have played, because all my kids are small, so I have played it, and there are a ton of people up there all the time, but even if there weren't, I, in general, the look of it, something has to happen. And I think it, we don't meet any safety, you know, right now, we have to do, we have to do something, so whether it would be the rubber mulch, or we just go the cheaper way and do the wooden mulch, which we're going to have to replace in another two years, we have to do something.
I think this kind of fieldwork needs to eventually make it nice and attractive, usable.
I just, I don't have children that use it, so I don't really have any.
I understand that's many kids use it.
I mean, even Mayor Vargas uses it.
Well, that's understandable, but.
We don't have some folks that's, that's.
I'll show you some pictures.
No, I think it's great, I, I think that's terrific, I like, I appreciate all the research that's been given, getting eight quotes, or nine quotes, or whatever that's. Getting eight quotes or nine quotes or whatever that takes, I know that, that takes a lot of time. No, just get it done. Gordon, Sam, and I don't think you need to, we got the money, so we're ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you. All right. Next up is a discussion of the amendment to the fee order. So Clint is gonna handle that. So Clint?
Linda, did you read one of those?
I did not. That's just occurring.
So what's in the, what's in the amendment is, is occurring.
Thanks, Linda.
Bye, thank you.
And so was the last Texas lift, if I can find my log, that they passed, the state of passed or adopted, that we can't chart contractor registration fee.
For electricity.
For electricity. And that was already in place for plumb, so essentially what we need to do is, we just need to trust our fee ordinance to go and remove the fees that we have noted for charter registration. I think that's the only, we talked about some others, but I think we're gonna shift or let those stay off.
The only other ones that are left are gonna be HVAC, irrigation, and maybe TC.
Yeah, that's right. So we talked about actually just removing registration fees, but everybody knowing